Let's call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kramer.
Present.
Mr. Leibnerline.
Here.
Mr. Rossen.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Assistant Commissioner Ray by Ray Sendal.
Here.
Commissioner Rundell.
Here.
And we have a call.
Thank you. Mr. Rundell, can I get you to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We'll open public comment. This will be our first public comment of the meeting. Anybody wishing to make public comment at this point in time? Seeing none. No, I will close public comment. We move on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda? Well, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve since it's not... Oh, it's coming up. I'll just do it now. I have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Nieberline. There you go. Can I get... Let's get you to cast your votes, please. And we have a unanimous approval. Thank you. And next on the agenda is consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission's study session held on March 14th and these Planning Commission meeting held on Thursday, March 16th, 2023. Can I get a motion, please? I have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Nieberline. Can I get Commissioner Reed to...
Can we do the verbal motion?
Can I get you to approve that verbally?
Everybody watching at home.
I move to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission's study session held on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, and Planning Commission meeting held on Thursday, March 16th, 2023.
Negative verbal second, Commissioner Reed, Nieberline.
Second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Let's move on to item number seven. Item seven is PCN 23-004 slash CU 23-002, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of a minor recreational facility occupying an 8,307-square-foot portion of a larger 47,539-square-foot building located at 539 Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, APN 037-37015 in the I Industrial Zoning District for possible action. Good evening, Jonathan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners. This request is to establish, as you said, a minor recreational facility at 539 Vista Boulevard. This is in the Industrial Zoning District, just north of I-80, so just south of... Off the screen here on Vista is Interstate 80. 539 Vista, outlined in red in the exhibit, is one of 17 spaces on a 3.8-acre shared industrial complex site, and this is an 8,300-square-foot space, as you said, Madam Chair. The 17 spaces are individually owned and leased within a shared management association, which establishes shared access and parking and overall maintenance of the site. The proposal before you today, as I said, is for the operation of a minor recreational use. The Sparks Municipal Code requires that a minor recreational use obtain a conditional use permit in order to operate in the Industrial Zoning District. The proposed recreational user before you this evening is the Pawnee Baseball and Softball Academy. As stated in the application materials, for the request, the business is an appointment-only facility for training youth baseball and softball players, and the facility includes batting cages and similar amenities for that training. Staff analyzed the impacts associated with this use and the impacts it may have on surrounding businesses, namely parking. Given the availability of shared parking on the larger site, the applicant's representative has prepared a full parking analysis to demonstrate that there will be available parking on the site to accommodate the expected business at this facility based on established data available through the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. So to clarify some of those details that we went over at our study session related to that data, the ITE establishes that batting cages or batting cage facilities should contain two parking spaces for every batting cage on the site. The proposal before you tonight is for a facility that contains six batting cages. So staff takes that 12. We've added a buffer to it of an additional four parking spaces for employees and others in order to arrive at a grand total of 16 parking spaces that should be available in order for this facility to function effectively at that site. The complex itself contains 148 parking spaces. The applicant is allotted five for its agreement with the Management Association for the complex, and after the hour of, generally speaking, 4:00 p.m. or so, the applicant would have access to several more parking spaces as the additional businesses in the complex are closing down for the day. As you'll see in the proposed conditions provided to you with our analysis and the staff report for this item, staff believes that there are a few additional measures that can be taken through the conditions of approval to help alleviate potential conflicts. One of those will be to require window and door signage specifying that the facility is prohibited to walk-in business and that it's by appointment only. Another condition would require signage in the parking area to guide customers to park in only reserved spaces for this business, not to park in reserved spaces that are specific to neighboring tenants, and instead to use the shared parking only. Another condition would specify that on weekdays, the hours of operation not commence before the hour of 4:00 p.m. That's a key part of staff's strategy in crafting these conditions for your consideration, that by limiting the hours of operation, there'd be less conflict with neighboring businesses. And again, those businesses are generally closing for the day around the hour when this business will be opening. Another condition would specify that since this is a conditional use or discretionary user, any future parking conflict with permitted-by-right uses, such as a warehouse in an industrial zoning, that that would require the conditional user, or this applicant in this case before you, to be responsible for providing documentation, that they can provide some solution if that parking conflict should arise. Staff believes that the findings for a conditional use permit can be made. They are as follows. Finding C1 asks you to consider compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds that this request supports goal MG1 and MG2 to support economic vitality and create a diverse land use mix, as well as goal EV4 to promote the development of small businesses around the city. Finding C2 asks you to consider compatibility with surrounding uses. In terms of compatibility, the variety of uses was considered in staff's analysis of impacts, especially related to parking, as I covered a moment ago, and those impacts are largely mitigated by staff's recommendation that we condition hours of operation. Finding C3 asks you to consider impairment of natural resources. This request will not have impacts on natural resources, given that the business will take place in an existing, established facility. Finding C4 asks you to consider other identified impacts. Again, as we discussed earlier, parking is the main impact related to this use. Staff believes that that impact can be mitigated pretty significantly by the proposed conditions of approval. And finding C5 asks for a public notice to be given in a public hearing held on April 5th. All property owners within 500 feet of the site were notified by mail, and on that day, the Reno Gazette Journal published our notice of this item as well. Staff did receive written comment from a neighboring business owner. That comment has been provided to the Planning Commission. It's staff's belief that the concerns outlined in that comment from the member of the public have been addressed by staff's conditions of approval, by our analysis, and by the items that I've mentioned in our presentation this evening. With that, staff is recommending approval of the request. The applicant is here this evening as well, as is his consultant, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have for us.
Jonathan, this is a public hearing item. I will open this for any comments from the public at this time.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Typically, the chair will ask the applicant if they would like to speak.
So let's back me up, and I will ask the applicant to come and speak first, and then we'll open it for public comment.
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening, Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation on behalf of the applicant, also the preparer of the parking study. Our team is in agreement with the conditions of approval, as stated in the staff report. We don't have a formal presentation tonight, as we think that's covered the situation very well, and we look forward to your approval. So thank you. Happy to answer questions.
Now we will open it for public comment, as this is a public hearing item. Do we have anybody signed in for public comment?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, Commissioners? Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay. I don't think we have any. I just want to say, good job on the batting cages, because I know that one closes, one opens. There was a major one that closed over off of Glendale, and thank you very much for providing that for our youth in this community, because we don't have anything else in this community for them. And the fact that it opens at 4:00 is nice because of the traffic and the industrial nature of that area. I certainly appreciate that. Being a softball player my entire youth, it's nice to see that we still have that availability to our kids in this community, so I appreciate that as a parent, although my kids are all grown. I do appreciate that, and I think that the parents of our youth are going to appreciate that as well, so I appreciate that. I hope that we don't have an issue with parking. I did take a drive through the area and see that it could be a little dicey at times, but by appointment only, I think that that's a good use and good idea. So we're not going to have a bunch of people out there all at the same time, so I think that that's thoughtful, and I appreciate that. So that's all I have to say. Any other comments, guys? Okay. I think I'm ready for a motion, if everybody else is. Can I get a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Rossen?
I move to approve the conditional use permit PCN 230-0004 slash CU 23-002, a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of an 8,307-square-foot minor recreational facility located at 539 Vista Boulevard, based on finding C1 through C5 and the facts supporting these findings that set forth in the staff report and subject to the six conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
I have a second by Commissioner Reed. All in favor? And we have a unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you. We will now move on to our general business item. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to endorse the City of Sparks 2022 Regional Annual Report and forward the report to the Regional Planning Commission and Regional Planning Governing Board for possible action. Good evening, Sienna.
Good evening, Chair Kramer, members of the Planning Commission. I'm still getting my presentation up and running here, so hold on just a moment. All right. So for your consideration tonight is the 2022 Regional Annual Report, which state law requires be prepared each year by local governments and affected entities in the Truckee Meadows region. Affected entities are entities like the Regional Transportation Commission, the Regional Washoe County School District, also the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority. Just to start off upfront, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission endorse this report and forward it to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and Regional Planning Governing Board, as outlined in state law. For a bit of background here, the Regional Annual Report for you tonight identifies activities that the City of Sparks and the Sparks Redevelopment Agency have taken in calendar year 2022 to support the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The report is organized by the five policy areas of the regional plan, and this presentation is just going to walk through the 2022 activities in each of those policy areas. So to start off, the first policy area of the regional plan includes policies related to population growth and forecasting. Looking at the City of Sparks, between 2010 and 2020, excuse me, 2020, the city grew from a little over 92,000 to a bit over 103,000 persons, which is an increase of about 10,900 individuals. In more recent years, the city has experienced very robust growth. The certified population estimate for 2020 was, again, about 103,000 persons, and by 2022, the certified population estimate had increased to 111,735. That's an increase of about 8,500 persons over that two-year period, which, just to put it into perspective, compared to the last decade, is about 2,400 people less than that total population growth from 2010 to 2020. Both the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Programs provide vital funding for meeting affordable housing needs in our growing city, addressing homelessness in our city and the region, and also providing infrastructure improvements. So in FY 2022-23, the city received a bit over or about $652,000 of CDBG funds. These funds are programmed for various purposes, including supporting fair housing activities through the Silver State Fair Housing Council, constructing pedestrian improvements in low-income areas, and also engaging in housing rehabilitation programs. That includes the Emergency Repair Grant, that's a one-time grant of up to $10,000 to address life-safety emergencies, as well as accessibility modifications with a primary residence, and the Deferred Loan Program that allows qualifying single-family homeowners to receive a 0% interest deferred loan up to $25,000 to perform essential repairs on their primary residence. The home funds are used to fund predevelopment loans for affordable housing projects. However, no projects within the City of Sparks apply for these funds in 2022. The second policy area of the regional plan addresses the region's form with policies to manage growth in the Truckee Meadows region. These policies set the regional priority for growth using regional land designations. You may be more familiar with the term tiers to describe those designations. And those... That tool really works to maximize growth within urban core areas of the region and limit premature expansion at the region's urban edge. Our Comprehensive Plan includes goals and policies, as you're familiar with, that support continued higher-density infill development and investment in the city's mixed-use district, and that district aligns with the mixed-use core designation or tier in the regional plan. And really, what we've continued to see is development and investment in the city's mixed-use district. The atrium apartments were constructed in 2022. This project includes 132 apartments over structured parking. Sierra Cove also opened in 2022. That's a 34-unit income-restricted apartment building. And then, in addition, construction started on Truckee Heights, which will be a 40-unit income-restricted apartment complex. It's currently under construction on Prater Way, if you've driven by. Looking at commercial projects in the mixed-use district, both the Legends Bay Casino and Dottie's Casino also opened in 2022. Also related to regional form on this slide are annexations and Comprehensive Plan amendments. In 2022, the Planning Commission approved three Comprehensive Plan amendments. You'll remember one for Western Village, another for 295 Little Earth Drive, and a third for 1845 Glendale Avenue. Each of these amendments was found to conform to the regional plan, including policies related to regional form. And on annexations, there were none that were approved in 2022. Moving on, regional plan policies for public services and facilities require capital improvement programs to promote growth priorities. In 2022, various projects were completed that promote those growth priorities. The city continued with its sanitary sewer rehabilitation, excuse me, manhole rehabilitation program, and rehabbing those deteriorated manholes really helps to ensure that the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility is treating just wastewater, not extra groundwater, which reduces the overall treatment capacity at the plant. In 2022, the city rehabilitated 30 manholes. In addition, various park improvements were also programmed, including a surface replacement of the OPO tennis court, the construction of an all-abilities playground at the Marina, and then also the replacement of synthetic turf for Field 9 at the Golden Eagle Regional Park. In regards to natural resources, in 2022, Spark city staff participated in the Natural Resources Plan Working Group. If you're sitting on the Regional Planning Commission, you've been getting updates from the Regional Planning Agency on that, but just to give you a little bit more background, for those members that don't, the Natural Resources Plan is being prepared to increase data availability and inform policy decisions as part of the upcoming regional plan update, which is anticipated to be completed in 2024. In addition, city staff continues efforts to implement the regional plan by supporting the Regional Planning Agency's data collection and analysis function. Staff regularly forward spatial data that's used in the population employment model that the Regional Planning Agency prepares, and we also participate in the updates. Those occur on a regular basis. We also participated in the review of the housing unit model that the Regional Planning Agency prepares that's used to assist the state demographer in preparing the annual population estimate. So very important to make sure all of the data input there is accurate so that we are capturing and reflecting all of the population that we are seeing on the ground. With that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission endorse this report and forward it to the Regional Planning Commission and Regional Planning Governing Board. You have a motion to that effect on this slide, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the report.
One question, just out of curiosity. You had talked about Truckee Heights. I'm trying to remember when that was approved. Can you tell me where that is located?
Through you, Chair Kramer, to Commissioner Reed. Truckee Heights, I don't remember the exact date that it was approved. I believe it was in 2021, but potentially it was 2022. It was through the city's administrative review process, so it did not come before the Planning Commission. We go through that review process to condition projects, but they don't actually come to this body for a public hearing. And so the actual address is... I do remember that off the top of my head. That's 2153 Prater Way. But again, if you drive down Prater, you can see it under construction at the moment.
I was just wondering where the cross streets were.
Oh, okay.
First.
Yeah, 21st Street and Prater.
Oh, I know where it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just trying to place where it was. Okay. I wanted to know. It didn't come before the Plaid and Commission, because I was thinking, wait, I don't remember that one.
I know where it is.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Questions? I have one. The home funds. You said that nobody had applied to those. Do people know about those? I mean, I do not, so I'm assuming that it is not widely publicized, that people in Sparks know that there is a program out there for them if they qualify for these zero-interest loans to...
Yeah, so to your point, Chair Kramer, while there weren't any projects located within the City of Sparks that applied for the funds, there were a variety of projects that applied for the funds. And so the home funds are a well-known tool for the development of affordable housing in the region, and we often have projects that are using those funds. We just didn't happen to have one in the calendar year of 2022.
Okay. Okay, I just...
Chair Kramer.
Yes.
The City of Sparks has an agreement with the City of Reno and Washoe County through the Home Consortium, where we pool our funds on home funds.
Okay.
And so when projects are constructed in Reno, that is oftentimes using City of Sparks funding. There's not enough funding necessarily to divvy it up and build a miniature jurisdiction, so we pool them so we can build an entire project with those funds.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Awesome. Okay. Nice to know. Didn't know that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Ready? Okay. I'm ready to... There are no more questions. I can take a motion. Commissioner Reed.
I just put a cock drop in. I'm gonna... Okay. I can do it. I move to endorse the City of Sparks 2022 Regional Annual Report and forward the report to the Regional Planning Commission and Regional Planning Governing Board. It's a short one. That's good.
I'll second it.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Rossen. Please cast your votes. And we have a unanimous approval. Thank you, Sienna.
Thank you.
That was very informative.
Very good.
Okay, moving on. Announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Mr. Rundell.
None tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, public comment. We will open our last public comment. Do we have anybody wishing to make public comment on any item on the agenda, not on the agenda for future anything whatsoever? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Staff comments and announcements.
Chair Kramer, we were discussing through the city attorney Sendal having a workshop format for an ethics training and open, or a public meeting, open meeting law training, excuse me. We were looking at the date of May 30th, 2023. I believe that to be a Tuesday, and I was just wondering if that would work for those present.
Gotta pull out my calendar.
I think we could do a lunchtime deal from 12:00 to 1:00.
It's good for me.
Okay.
I'll be back in town, so...
All right.
Works for me.
Well, if the chair of the Planning Commission would anticipate, we will do a meeting that day for a workshop and put it on your calendar.
You bet. That will work.
And that is the only announcement that I had.
Thank you. And you will send out an email to that effect?
Yes, we will.
Or we could schedule it at our study session on the...
For the May meeting.
For the May meeting?
We will remind everyone. We will notice it as a public meeting, because it will be a quorum of the Planning Commission.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yes, we will. We will remind everyone and notice it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on, Commissioner... Moving on, Commissioner announcements and comments. Anybody have any announcements, comments? There are none? Okay. Then we're gonna go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, guys. That was easy.